One minute from there.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready, sir.
All right, thank you, ready. Evening, council, and evening, guests. Welcome to Madison City Council meeting Tuesday, January 19th. Before we get started, I want to make an announcement that tonight we are streaming live on the City of Madison YouTube channel. So while we continue to work out a little bit of audio logistics, if you are speaking, speak clearly and directly into your microphones. We streamed our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting live today, and that went very well. And then after the meeting, we'll share that to Facebook, and then that'll again start the progress that we've made with regards to transitioning to more of a streaming local content. So I want to make that announcement, but let's first rise, remove our hats, bow our heads, recite the Lord's Prayer, and pledge the leadus.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our day of bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass us. We do not intrude temptation, but deliver us from sin. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. Clerk, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Tevinall?
Here.
Creach?
Here.
Lucy D'Attilo?
Here.
Rampy?
Here.
Chatham?
Here.
Bartlett?
Here.
Dan D'Attilo?
Here.
Thank you. Counsel, you were provided the amendments from the meeting, January the 5th. Are there any amendments or modifications to those minutes, please? Now we'll have to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move we approve the minutes submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Move on to the agenda. I'd like to invite Chief Wallace up to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council. Two distinguished guests would be here tonight. First off, I'd like to ask Officer Chad Wainer to step up here to the podium, please. I have a presentation to make to Officer Wainer. On December 24th, 2020, at approximately 10:38 a.m., Patrolman Chad Wainer responded to an overdose call at a business located in 400 block of Cletty Drive. Upon the arrival of Officer Wainer, he found an unresponsive male on the floor of the business. Officer Wainer noticed the male had turned purplish in color and found no pulse upon checking. Officer Wainer began CPR immediately and continued until the patient was turned over to KDH EMS. The male was transported to KDH where he fully recovered. Before leaving the hospital, Officer Wainer was able to speak with the individual whose life he just helped save. On behalf of the grateful citizens of Madison, Indiana, and the very proud Chief of Police, it's my honor to present Patrolman W. Chad Wainer with the Distinguished Life Saving Medal of Honor. Next, if I could have Patrolman Adam Guzman step forward, please.
Adam, would you like your family with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On January 3rd, 2021, at approximately 9:00 a.m., Patrolman Adam Guzman responded to an overdose call at a residence located in the 1700 block of Marshall Street. Upon Officer Guzman's arrival, he found an unresponsive male on the floor of the residence. Officer Guzman began CPR immediately, and the overdose victim, as the overdose victim had no apparent art activity. Officer Guzman continued his life-saving measures until a link should carry to emergency medical personnel. The male was transported to KDH and has since fully recovered. On behalf of the grateful citizens of Madison, Indiana, and the very proud Chief of Police, it's my honor to present Patrolman Adam Guzman the Distinguished Life Saving Medal of Honor.
Fantastic. Can we get a picture of you and both the officers, please?
Sure. You guys mind coming back up just for a second, please? Do you mind coming back up just a second? You can count the lines? Very proud of you.
Very proud of you guys. You are literally out there protecting our community, and this is just an example of just acts of heroism that happen every day that you deserve to be recognized for. So we're very grateful for both of you.
Thank you. It is, and the officers, you know, they jump right in. We don't ask why or circumstances. You know, these folks are somebody's brother, sister, they're somebody's child, they're loved, and it's our duty to jump in and do whatever we can, and these officers are outstanding examples of what the Madison Police Department is all about. So I'm very proud of these guys, and they continue to go out and improve it on a daily basis that we're becoming the department that we want to be. So I appreciate it very much. Is it okay if I continue?
Please continue, Chief.
You guys love it when I come, don't you? It's kind of a treat to see you around.
Always entertaining, too.
This month is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I'd like to ask Detective Sean Scudder if he could step forward and say a few words to the council, please.
Like Chief Wallace said, this month is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month. So we're all aware of the Operation Predator Net that we recently performed, which, to be honest, when we started that, I didn't have very high expectations that we were going to get results. But it exploded into, for several months, it was a full-time commitment for several of us within the department. Since Operation Predator Net, my eyes have kind of been open to the world of human trafficking, something that before this was not even on my radar. Since we did Operation Predator Net, we've had countless agencies and organizations reach out to us, asking to assist them and/or join their efforts to combat human trafficking, a problem that is not only occurring in third world countries like we see on television, but it's occurring in small communities just like Madison. The department recently received training through the Indiana Trafficking Victims Assistance Program, which will assist us in not only identifying human trafficking, but to know the steps to take to get the victims much-needed resources and help. We also recently joined the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, otherwise known as ICAC. The ICAC program consists of 61 task force across the country, including the Indiana Division, which is made up of numerous agencies across the state. The ICAC program helps state and local law enforcement agencies develop an effective response to technology-facilitated child sexual exploitation and Internet crimes against children. This help encompasses forensic and investigative components, training and technical assistance, victim services, and community education. As members of the task force, we will be eligible for countless training opportunities, access to the latest forensics, and be able to network with agencies across the country. So my belief is that through Operation Predator Net and our future work with ICAC, we have stopped and will continue to stop countless young children from becoming victims. The victimization of children is one of the most horrific crimes there are, and with the support of the City Council and the mayor, we will continue the extremely important work of protecting our most vulnerable. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Detective. I just want to, before you finish up, I just want to say thank you, Detective Scudder. This is the result you get when you invest in public safety through our community with the right leadership, the right talent, and the right focus, where many other communities across the country and across the state are looking for ways to defund or disinvest. We are producing results, so Chief, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, very proud of our detectives, and with the fore now that we have, we're able to detail them on special topics such as this, and I think we see the fruits of our labor. So although we don't like to read about that, it is uncomfortable, but it's very important to get these people where they belong, and that's off our street, so very proud of them. Just a couple stats real quick, and then I'll get out of your ear. Just wanted to point out, this is the statistics from 2019 versus 2020. We actually had a 12% increase in traffic stops, a 17.5% increase in narcotic-related arrests over 2019. We had a 16% decrease in property-related crimes. In overall, we had a 5% increase in our overall call volume. I've often contended that as our narcotics arrests go up, our property crimes go down, and these statistics show that this year. I think the, one of the important stats that we may look over, because we looked at the 17.5% increase in narcotic-related arrests, that's awesome, but that 12% increase in traffic stops, that means our officers are out there pounding the streets hard, making those traffic stops, and doing just a lot of drug interdiction at the street level. So very proud, it's, sometimes it's not pleasant work to dig through a car and find hidden narcotics, but the guys and girls at the MPD are willing to do that, and I think it's, I think it's paying dividends, and I think that's a part of why our property crimes are going down. As I stated today earlier at the Board of Public Works meeting, if you have been a victim of a property crime, then, you know, I don't want to minimize that because that's devastating. But overall, these numbers are dropping, and we hope to continue to see that even be more so for this time of year. So having said that, thank you guys for your time. Have a great day.
Any questions for Chief Wallace before you go, sir?
Thank you, Chief Wallace, for all your work. We appreciate it for sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you to the entire police department, too. Moving on, we have one resolution and one ordinance to consider tonight, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Tevinall.
The first resolution is Resolution Number 1-2021, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, for the purposes of purchasing certain real property. Wherefore, pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-10.5-5, subsection 1, the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, has determined that is in the interest of the, that is interested in purchasing certain real property, more particularly described in Exhibit A that's attached here, too, which is the legal description. Now, therefore being resolved by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, that the council hereby expressly expresses and confirms its interest in making a purchase of the property, that the council has reviewed the terms of the purchase and sale agreement and addendum to the purchase and sale agreement attached to Exhibit B, and the appraisals attached to Exhibit C, and believes that this purchase to be in the best interest of the city. That the council hereby appoints the mayor and the Board of Public Works and Safety as the purchasing agent, and to have them finalize the terms of the purchase and sale agreement and the addendum of the purchase and sale agreement as required by law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana. And what we're talking about here are, and the mayor can talk about this more, but it's three pieces of property mainly located on the river, up near the bridge, two near the bridge, and then one parcel on the way out of town.
Do you want to have a motion to get this on the table, and then we can talk further about it?
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-1 as presented.
I'll second that.
Counsel, thank you for that. We had previewed several parcels of property the city had intended to purchase several months ago in the executive session. Tonight, you have the due diligence that's required for that. Over the course of the last seriously two or three decades, the City of Madison, with cooperation from the state of Indiana, has made significant infrastructure improvements across the city, particularly creating a truck route, and most recently, the new bridge, and then followed up by the new bridge approach, which is all intended to have a more safe approach for truck traffic, but also a more direct route for individuals coming across Kentucky into the state of Indiana to traverse across the community and further into the state. So one of the things that we wanted to do was continue that investment, and part of that investment is about improving gateways. And we have an opportunity to acquire this property. As you know, the plans there with NDOT extended access to the pedestrian walkway onto the bridge, street level at Harrison Street, which I think is a fantastic amenity for the City of Madison. And these two parcels here will allow us then to apply for grants, grant money, or compile other funds that we may have to invest there for gateway improvements. And I think you'll see over the course of the next year, some significant additions to that area, which will make it cleaner and make it spruced up, and certainly that investment's consistent with the quality of the investment that's been made in the bridge approach. So we have a couple other properties, other parcels across the city that we are also under contract to buy, that we're going through the due diligence process now, but I would appreciate your all's approval here tonight. And then, again, this is a continuation of the investment we're making with the gateway to Indiana, which happens to be the City of Madison, coming from Kentucky. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Here, now, do we have any public comment on this?
I will state that we did not receive any public comments or questions via email for any of the items on the agenda tonight or the public comment section for the agenda.
Hearing nothing, we'll do a roll call, though.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Chatham?
Yes.
Dan D'Attilo?
Yes.
Rampy?
Yes.
Lucy D'Attilo?
Yes.
Tevinall?
Yes.
Creach?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, now we have ordinance number 2021-1. It's an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing a three-way stop for traffic at the intersection of Ross Street and Highland Street. Whereas, a traffic investigation has been completed by the City of Madison Police Department, indicating that it is necessary for safe traffic control and flow, that a three-way stop be established at the intersection of Ross Street and Highland Street, and whereas it would be in the best interest of the traffic safety and control for said intersection to be changed as set forth above. Now, therefore being ordained by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, that Section 1, a three-way stop is hereby established at the intersection of Ross Street and Highland Street. Section 2, the City of Madison Street Department is hereby authorized to erect such signs and other traffic control devices as may be necessary to implement the intent of this ordinance. Section 3, anyone failing to stop in accordance with this sign herein provided shall be guilty of a Class D infraction, which carries a penalty of up to $25. Section 4, this ordinance shall become immediately effective upon its adoption of the Common Council's signature, the mayor, enrollment in the book of ordinance, its publication of notice as required by law, and posting of the stop sign at said intersection. Any ordinance in conflict with this ordinance is hereby repealed. And that is sponsored by Councilwoman Creach. And that's on first reading, and we'll have a second reading and any public comments at the next meeting.
Any reports, recommendations, or other business from the standing select committees of the City Council? And we'll have the reports of city officials at the next meeting. No bills on third or second reading, miscellaneous. So now we can turn it over to our town hall portion of our meeting and invite anyone here tonight, if they would like to address the mayor's office and City Council. As I mentioned, we did not receive any comments via email prior to today's meeting, so I would invite anyone in the audience, if they would like to speak and address the city and City Council and the mayor's office, to come forward now, please. Yes, sir. Sorry, could you please tell us who you are again?
Rick Reeves, 1421 Cherokee Court. And Mr. Mayor, I rise to a point of personal privilege. I got the Chikong flu around Christmas, and I was in the hospital, and I was pretty ill. And I want to, I've worked for the hospital for 40 years, never been a participant in a care like that. People were coming in like aliens, all dressed up, all gowned up and all that stuff. Never knew their names, but they gave me excellent care. And I'd like to thank the City of Madison for having such a fine institution, and for the people that didn't like me to get well, screw it. Thank you.
Eagle, we are happy that you're back, and you have not lost your sense of humor, and you are reiterating what we already knew, which is we are very, very fortunate to have our health care in our community with Kingsdarts Hospital, all of the brave nurses and doctors who are working there, all of our first responders, who are taking care of our community during what definitely in the last couple of months has been a surge in coronavirus cases. We leant along in a very, very low-impact way throughout most of last year until we started approaching Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Years, and we've been reminded constantly that we can't take any of this for granted, particularly out of the mitigation approaches that we have to keep ourselves and our community safe. So we're glad you made it through the gauntlet, sir. Anybody else? Want to make me speak the rest of the next hour?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I please make a comment?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So as many of you know, David Alcorn was a former representative for the City of Madison on City Council, and I have been speaking with him, and God is okay to let people know this. So David was recently diagnosed with melanoma. I just found out earlier this week of that diagnosis. He's had lots of tests over the last few weeks, and they do have a plan in place, but treatment for him will start on Wednesday, and I'm just asking for the community to keep in your thoughts and prayers as he goes through this tough time. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Anyone else? Just a few things here, just pivoting a little bit on COVID. As you know, we are categorized now by color code. We are in our, I believe, our third week now of being designated red. We're going to be here for a while, and really what being red means is that we have a high number of weekly positive cases, as the Department of Health, State Department of Health measures on per 100,000 in population. And we have a high weekly average positivity rate relative to all of those taking tests. And unfortunately, we are to the point where, you know, we have just continued to have more and more cases and a larger number of not only very serious illnesses, but deaths as well. So my prayers and my heart goes out to all the families that have lost loved ones. We need to keep doing what we can do with regard to the mitigants that we've been talking about for a year. And I won't go into all of those again, and I talked about them again last Friday, but we're going to be in this environment for quite a while, and we may eventually migrate from red to an orange, and then a yellow, and back to blue, which is our goal, to be in a low-impacted county. Jefferson County is in the red category, like almost the majority, probably two-thirds of the state. Very few are now in the orange, I'm not sure any are in yellow, but we need to be mindful that it's still out there. Vaccinations are now creating some hope for our community and communities across the state of Indiana. But it's going to take a long time to get properly vaccinated because of the way they're phasing that in, but more importantly, just because of, you know, the low supply. I mean, the entire country is trying to catch up with an adequate vaccine supply in order to distribute across their states and then to the communities. We're fortunate that I believe probably around 1,300 or 1,400 individuals in Jefferson County have already received their first doses. Several have received their second doses and become fully immunized. On a percentage basis, it's really a relatively small percentage, unfortunately. So I think the best things that we can do is continue to follow our mitigation strategies, and I'll reiterate that I'm an advocate for regular testing. I think that is how we know exactly what our status is. I get tested every week, and other than one time, I've been fortunate all the other 15 times. So let's just keep doing what we can, and then advocating across the community, and certainly being sympathetic to what families and hospitals and nursing homes and our first responders are going through on a day-to-day basis. So there's two additional things I'd like to mention, or three, actually. First, I'll start with, on a positive note, we did last week finish the second round of our Mobilize Madison Small Business Madison Small Business Rescue Grant Program. That was a $300,000 grant program that has helped 32 small businesses in our community. It targeted the preservation of low to moderate income jobs across the City of Madison, and 94% of the recipients who received that were able to accomplish that, and that translates to about 231 jobs that we have assisted. And it's a broad spectrum across the community. So there is a Phase 3 that we're exploring with Oprah now, and it will have some other elements to it besides small business grants. So we're very excited about that, and we'll be coming back to city council, asking for your blessings on matching funds for that program, because we are not out of the woods. And like we just talked about with regards to the prevalence, you know, there's a public health impact, and there's also an economic impact, and we need to attack both of them and work on parallel approaches to both of them in order to get back to, get back to normal, whatever that normal is going to look like. We'd also like to recognize the loss of Spence Schneider. You probably read about this in the paper today and heard the news over the course of the weekend. But not only was Spence my neighbor for 15 years, who lived across the street from me here on West Main Street, but Spence is an icon, a local City of Madison icon, Hall of Famer, Yale graduate, member of the 1950 Cubs Champion Team, state representative, and just involved in lots of things across our community. So I'd like to express our condolences to his family as well in the loss of Spence Schneider. Also like to recognize something unique that happened over the weekend. If you were watching the news, Kelsey Builds became just the fifth individual in Madison High School history and the first Cub wrestler to win a state championship, when she claimed the 106-pound title at the Indiana High School Girls Wrestling State Championships at Hamilton Heights High School on Friday. We've been following her career all season, so I want to send a great congratulations out to her and her family and the rest of the Cub Wrestling Team and the coaches for just all the dedication and hard work that goes into being a competitive athlete and competitive student-athlete at that. But just one of a handful of athletes across Cub history who have won state championships. So this weekend, she'll also be wrestling in the sectionals. We'll also be wrestling against the boys. So we wish her good luck in the sectionals, and also congratulations for her championship victory with the Girls' Wrestling State Championship. Counsel, we have a lot on our plates for the year. We'll probably be trying to arrange a State of the City address in the next 30 to 45 days to talk a little bit about our successes in 2020, but more importantly, about the direction we're heading in 2021. All the work that you guys have contributed, helping the city last year, I think, has built momentum and has positioned us to be really successful in 2021, despite the challenges that we've all had dealing with COVID. So not just myself, but in Jefferson County, too, there's a lot of people, you know, working very, very hard on a volunteer basis to, you know, help keep Madison moving forward and doing things that, you know, exemplify the character of Madison, but more importantly, create this high quality of life that we enjoy here in the City of Madison. So I want to thank you guys for all your past efforts, and also I want to thank you in advance for all the hard work and challenges you're going to have in 2021, but it's going to pay off. We're building momentum with some quick wins. We are also building momentum for things that may not come to fruition for the next three to six years. But that's the environment we're in with regards to the planning, and we focus a lot on planning. So I want to thank you all there. I'll stop. Answer any questions that counsel or anyone in the audience might have, and thank you. I just also want to thank you, Dan, for bringing up Councilman Alcorn, and our prayers are with him in the same way, too. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Thanks everyone for attending tonight.